Recording on this computer. So hopefully I can get it put on YouTube right when we're done. Claire's gonna keep us updated on the softball. Um, and, and what else happening there? So if you guys have questions, just fire away. I am, I'm happy to try to answer.
We have two outs. We're about to win.
Okay, that's excellent. That's excellent.
I have a question.
Of course, Matty, please fire.
Based on the structure of hemoglobin, why does it bind oxygen so well?
Iron.
Okay, I thought that that was why, but.
I mean, there's some other, there's some other things in the way that it kind of all folds together. And those things, but mostly it's because it has iron in it and that's really strongly attracted to the oxygen.
Okay.
Do we need to know a lot of the other ways that oxygen is transported or just by hemoglobin?
So Rock, there's really only one other way that oxygen is transported in the blood. Do you remember what that is?
By the fluid, uh, diffusion or something.
So close, close. Does anybody else know? So it, it is almost exclusively bound to hemoglobin. But there's a tiny little bit, right? If you put the little thing on your finger, you're gonna get like ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent. Sort of O two sat measures, which is what's on hemoglobin. Where is that last? Like one or two percent?
Isn't it dissolved in the blood plasma?
Yeah, it's just dissolved in the blood plasma. Oh dear Truman. Buddy, it's okay. Truman didn't like that answer. Um, so those are the two ways Brock. Now you guys do definitely need to know, um, the three ways that, that carbon dioxide is carried in the blood, right? The carbon dioxide can bind to hemoglobin. The carbon dioxide is just straight and dissolved in the plasma and that there is carbon dioxide stored in the form of bicarbonate. In the blood. So you do need to know those threes. There's, there's more ways to hold CO2 than there is just the oxygen.
How can the ventilatory breakpoint tell us anaerobic threshold?
Ah, okay. This was the stuff Hala we were supposed to cover today that I forgot. Um, I'm not gonna blame anybody else for forgetting to remind me, but this was the stuff that I was supposed to, um, that I was supposed to, to kind of go back over that we didn't hit very well. So. Let me, this will be easier. Let me pull. Oh, okay. No, I can't do that. Um, actually, cause I'm recording, I can't pull it up. So. What happens? I'll try to just draw this like this. So normally, right? CO2 is the primary thing that controls, that controls breathing. And so what we get with most things is that as oxygen consumption goes up like this, then ventilation is gonna go up in concert with it in, in a relative kind of one-to-one ratio because we're making CO2 right at the end of the electron transport chain. That extra CO2 from there diffuses out of muscle into the blood, gets picked up by chemo receptors and it increases our breathing. However, okay. Once we get over lactate threshold. Once we clear lactate threshold. And we, we Truman, we start to see an increase in lactate appearing in the blood. Well, we see lactate because the hydrogen has disassociated from it. That hydrogen that ends up in your blood is gonna try to make the blood more acidic. Well, that's not a good thing. So what happens is the stored CO2 in bicarbonate in the blood that you, we all have floating around. Bonds to those hydrogen ions and it buffers them. And part of what it does when it buffers them is you have HCO minus, which is bicarbonate or CO2 minus. It binds the extra. It binds the extra hydrogen, it buffers it, and then through sort of a red dirt, a reverse Redux reaction at the lungs. It turns from hydrogen and bicarbonate into water and CO2. And then that extra CO2 then drives a further increase in breathing. That is, that CO2 that's not coming from the end aerobic metabolism at the electron transport chain. So what it looks like in practice is I'm exercising and VO2 is going up like this. Okay, and ventilation goes up in concert, very much parallel with it. And then I get to lactate threshold and while VO2 continues to do this, then what happens with breathing is there is this breakpoint where you get a graph where it looks kind of like this. Where it's going up at one slope and then you get over lactate threshold and there's that extra CO2 from buffering. So the slope of it begins to increase and we can back down from all of that. So we can use that disproportionate increase in breathing Truman. To, um, that disproportionate increase in breathing to denote that we've cleared lactate threshold. And that's really, really easy to see on if you're, if you have somebody connected on a metabolic cart and you're measuring oxygen consumption and ventilation while they're, while they're doing an exercise test and those kinds of things. So. And I apologize, we, I fully intended that we were gonna go back and, and talk about that a little bit more. I know that that was last week and you guys have seen the slides and then I talk about it in the, on the YouTube videos, but, um, it's, it's a, it's a kind of a tricky concept. What else, guys?
Can you talk about, um, how the movement of oxygen and carbon dioxide is controlled in the lung, blood and muscle tissue question?
For sure. So. This is primarily driven by partial pressures Kirby. Right? And so that may just be a, an issue of the way that I was asking the question was not a hundred.
That's what I was thinking, but.
Clear and straightforward. So we have right relatively higher O two partial pressure in atmospheric air than what is in, than what is in venous blood coming to the lungs or in those, those pulmonary capillaries. So when you breathe in, right? We have relatively higher O two in the alveoli, relatively lower CO2 from what's in the pulmonary capillaries. And so we get O two in, CO2 out. Right? Then it's carried in the, you know, in the, um, it's carried on hemoglobin primarily or a little bit dissolved right out in through the cardiovascular system. And then when it gets to the, the capillaries that are gonna be at a particular tissue, be it skeletal muscle or the liver or the intestine or wherever it's going to be, then we use those same sort of partial pressure gradients to try to drive the O two into the tissue. So generally partial pressure of oxygen inside of cells is going to be lower than the partial pressure in the capillaries. Um, and the partial pressure of CO2 in cells that are respiring like skeletal muscle using oxidative metabolism tends to be higher in the cell than it is in the capillaries. And so you get that where the O two wants to come in, the CO2 wants to come out, then we, then it goes and the capillaries form together, we get back into the veins and we go back to the lung and we get stuff out. That's really kind of what I'm, what I'm trying to denote, right? Is it's kind of encompassing partial pressures and then kind of how we, how we, um, how we carry stuff in the blood. And a lot of the, and this is beyond the scope of anything that I would ask you guys, but a lot of the stuff that we, the more mitochondria we have in a cell. Then relatively the lower we can keep oxygen levels inside that cell because we can use a lot of it at the end in, of the electron transport chain. So that keeps O two partial pressure in the cells is gonna be lower in cells with lots of mitochondria. So we wanna keep it down. Keep that diffusion gradient between the, the capillaries and the skeletal muscle as big as possible to drive as much O two in. Conversely, because we're using more O two, it keeps the O two low, but we make more CO2. So we get a larger CO2 gradient from those cells into the capillaries to help drive that CO2 out. In that way. So that's one of the other advantages that we get by increasing mitochondrial numbers in response to training or depending upon what your fiber types and those things are, is it actually helps with that what we would call flux of O two and stuff into and out of cells. But that's really probably a graduate biochemistry answer to, to that.
Um, okay. So we just, okay, I have two questions. We just talked about ventilation. And, um, VO2, is that kind of what you're talking about in question two? When you're, it says like draw and explain the changes that occur in ventilation as a person moves from breast. The studies say that's below lactic threshold. So that's just one to one.
It's gonna go up, Hala. And then if you can reach a steady, so like, you know, you're gonna go from, let's just say standing still and I'm gonna start jogging at a relatively easy pace, right? Remember it's gonna go up pretty steeply, very quickly, and then it's gonna kind of level off and it should stay there. Right? Very early kind of phase one change is driven by proprio receptors and those things in your, in your joints. Cause like, ooh, we're moving, breathe more really quickly. And then the more kind of gradual top part of that, and then the level off is driven by the changes in CO2 from metabolism. Yeah.
Okay. And then my other question is on number 11. This may be silly. Are you, it like says a friend that's training for, was it five K?
Sure.
And they're training seven days a week, ninety minutes. Are you just looking for like the intensity should be greater than fifty percent and they should be training like four to five days and it like plateaus after forty minutes?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm asking. And that, some of that stuff is covered in one of the other questions where it actually asked about, like, talk about the, the influence of intensity and duration and frequency on, on VO2. Um, I just wanted to, I, I have in previous classes asked the question in a couple of different ways. And I just wanted to give you guys a flavor of how I might ask it in a kind of very straightforward manner. Or I might ask that same thing in a way that like, that's what I'm looking for, but I'm giving you kind of an applied sort of scenario of things. Just to give you, to kind of give you a sense of, of how to, how to work your way through those.
So on, um, fourteen, it says it's talking about the blood distribution as we go from rest to exercise. Um, whenever you say discuss the input mechanisms that signal for the changes. Are you just talking about like exercise, eating and heat stress? Or are you talking about like the extrinsic neural control?
That's, so that's mostly what I'm talking about Catherine. And so the, well, let me, let me, let me try to clarify just a little. So. Blood is where it is at all times, right? Because of some combination of the local factors as well as the extrinsic neural control. And so most of us right now, I don't know. I mean, well, I'll speak for myself. I've not been exercising or anything. So my guess is that I don't have a huge amount of sort of epinephrine or epinephrine circulating. And so I, I haven't generated a bunch of sheer stress. So I don't have a lot of local factors or extrinsic neural control to vasodilate things to skeletal muscle. And so in the absence of those things, then the blood tends to mostly go into kind of the middle splenic regions and, and those kinds of things. So that's, that's kind of what I'm talking about, right? So it is where it is at rest. Because of a lack of some of those things in muscle. And then as you begin to exercise, right? Cardiac output increases. Which makes blood velocity and sheer stress through vessels increase, which then leads to vasodilation. And you're also gonna get the neural control side of things. You've got those local factors and the neural control that are gonna cause vasodilation to working skeletal muscle. And they're gonna, at the same time, I don't know that we talked about this very much. Um, but the same epinephrine that causes vasodilation in, um, or some vasodilation in in skeletal muscle causes vasoconstriction in, in, so to the kidneys and the liver and the stomach and those places. Um, because there are different densities of receptors on this, on the smooth muscle in, in those different tissues. And so different receptors, some receptors, epinephrine causes vasoconstriction and another receptors is a, it causes vasodilation. So you can get, you can get these opposite responses, but just by simply having different, different receptors in different places. I'm not sure if I've answered your question at all, Catherine. Sorry. I just sort of been talking about.
No, I think you answered pretty much.
What else, guys? True.
Um, okay. So when you were asking about like how increasing capillaries and blood volume can lead to an increasing VO2 in the absence of anything else? Um, like I guess I was just getting confused because like we're like, uh, I guess capillaries, like I just said that that like has a positive effect on the AVO two difference. You're like, I just didn't know if that would admit, if that was the absence of anything. I don't know. I was just like, maybe thinking about.
When I say that Kirby, what I mean is if I, if I, if I gave you more capillaries, like I'm a genie, poof, you have more capillaries. I have an altered stroke volume. I have an altered blood volume. I have an altered mitochondria. I've done nothing but give you more capillaries. That should, in theory, make your VO2 max go up. Right? Because what it will do, just like you said, is it can have an effect on AVO two difference by reducing diffusion distance and, and those kinds of things, just like what we talked about with all of those examples in class yesterday. It should have an effect on AVO two difference. Um, and then that, yeah. So that's what I mean by in the absence of anything else. It's not a thing that, that generally ever actually happens. I'm just trying to, again, it's a question to, can you just think your way through using the Fick equation, right? Capillaries would affect this. So if that goes up, yep, okay. I could get an increase in VO2.
Okay. And then like for the blood volume, like it's, you can still say that increasing blood volume increases stroke volume like that. It's just a direct correlation rather than like, you know, like, I don't know. I guess I was just thinking other than stroke volume, were you asking for something else that blood?
Oh no, absolutely not. No, no. Right? We just, we go and get a, you know, we get a bag of, of O negative blood Kirby and we give you a bag of O negative blood. Right now, we give you a pint, your blood volume goes up. Your stroke volume conceivably has gone up, right? Cause you've got, you have more blood volume, we get more preload potentially. And so therefore maybe we can get more, we can get more out of, out of your stroke volume. That's one we can actually change and that people will try to change.
Um, you mentioned this on Monday. You said that we may have to calculate um, like the percent of nitrogen or oxygen or carbon dioxide in the air. Okay.
If I said that, I didn't, that was, I, no, we're not gonna do that. Just no, no. Somebody mentioned that yesterday. Maybe it was Hannah or Julia, one of the, in one of, in Hannah's group, I think that I had said there was some, gonna be something we were gonna have to calculate. And we couldn't think of what it was. If I said that, I'm sorry. No, no, we're not gonna do that.
So there won't be any calculations?
Hello?
I don't know, Kelly. Beyond maybe, maybe doing age predicted max heart rate. I don't think I, 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 I don't. I started looking at questions again this afternoon and I, I don't recall seeing anything where that would, where I would want to do that. So.
Okay.
So I, I won't. I won't one hundred percent promise that, but I'm like ninety-nine point nine percent sure that the only thing that I might have you guys do is, is know how to do age predicted max heart rate. So that's, but that's it.
Okay. I have a question.
Of course, Matty.
Um, it's not on the like question list, but in the, in your outlines, you put what controls blood pressure? Are you looking for like neural input or just TPR and cardiac output?
Mostly cardiac output and internal peripheral resistance. Cause the neural input controls the peripheral resistance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to like get into that?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
We got enough stuff. That's not, you know. No.
I feel like we talked about this a lot, but I'm, I just wanna make sure, cause I feel like I'm getting confused.
For sure.
They, um, it was number five on the question list, but it's like explaining the alterations that occur in the cardiovascular system during prolonged exercise with heat. And then how these changes eventually lead to a decrease in exercise performance and VO2 max. So I understand like the fatigue part.
Okay.
But I'm confused on the VO2 max like.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. So great question. So this is, and I probably should have just written, and if I do it tomorrow, I'll, I'll write in there. This is the idea behind what we called cardiovascular drift yesterday and today. Right? That during prolonged exercise in the heat, you will lose blood volume via sweating. As you lose blood volume, right? Then, um, your stroke volume is going to fall. And so then you have to have a compensatory increase in heart rate to maintain cardiac output. However, when that begins to happen, right? Your heart rate is now artificially higher than it needs to be, or it normally would be to get you a given cardiac output. So you will reach age predicted max heart rate sooner. Which means you can't increase your VO2 to the same place you could in a cooler, a thermo neutral environment. So that's why it's gonna happen. Basically you dehydrate yourself, which makes stroke volume go down. And so if your max stroke volume goes down because you have less, you have less blood, then your, your VO2 max will go down.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, good. What else we got, guys? Claire, did we win? Yes, we won. Okay. But that's why Claire's gone. She's gone to celebrate.
I'm still here.
Got a lot of folks here who are just listening.
Okay, I have a really, really, really broad question and it has a potential to make me sound dumb. I'm gonna ask you anyway. Um.
Go for it, Matty.
How do? I feel like I could just look through my notes and probably find it, but we're here.
That's what I'm here for.
How do gases move from the alveoli into the blood and from the blood into the alveoli?
Okay. So that's a difference in, that's a difference in partial pressure.
Okay, okay. That, okay. That makes sense. I have another.
I guess you could argue that it, I mean, they technically they move by diffusion. Right? That they move from higher concentrations to lower concentrations because of the partial pressures. So.
Okay. And then how? Um, how, wait, um, I feel like this could be easily answered, whatever. How do oxygen and CO2 move from the blood into the skeletal muscle? Is it just through like?
Same thing.
Carriers?
Fusion. Yeah. It, they move through diffusion because of partial pressure gradients. I mean, we could get into, right? Like we could get into the different types of capillaries and talk about pores and capillaries and fenestrations and the actual, like the actual ins and outs on, on a cellular level of all of that. But it's just, they essentially diffuse from higher concentrations to lower concentrations along their partial pressure gradient. That's, that's all that we really need to be able to, to understand.
Okay.
I have a question.
Of course, Matt.
Um, I know one class period you're talking about nitric oxide. Uh, can you explain that a little bit more?
For sure. So nitric oxide is something that is going to be produced by the endothelial layer on the inside of your arteries and arterioles. And so it's, I mean, we could talk about the process. It's a multiple step process. But basically, um, you convert a substance called L-arginine. There's an enzyme in the endothelium that converts L-arginine into nitric oxide. And so that enzyme, those, that process gets activated when blood flow and cardiac output going through a vessel begins to increase. The velocity of the blood going through the vessel increases. And what happens in is as that velocity increases in the blood, right? It's water, but there's all of those like millions and millions of little red blood cells. Well, those, as the blood moves, it's kind of like running a sandblaster or something that, that, there are those little elements that are in there. And they rub against the inside of the endothelium. And that causes the thing that we call shear stress. And so as velocity increases, shear stress increases, or the friction of the blood on the endothelium increases. And we make nitric oxide. That nitric oxide tells the smooth muscle around those arteries and arterioles to relax and allow the vessel to vasodilate. So when the vessel gets bigger, then the velocity of the blood going through it is gonna slow down. And that then reduces the amount of shear stress that we're getting. So that's that kind of local response that we're going to see. Nitric oxide or L-arginine is a thing you can go to the drugstore and buy. It's the stuff that's in a bunch of different supplements. Um, it's gonna say like, we're gonna increase blood flow during exercise or after exercise by giving you this extra nitric oxide. Um, and this extra precursor for nitric oxide. And there's some evidence that in some people it works and but in most people it doesn't, it doesn't do a whole lot. So. Is that enough, Matt? Do I mean, I mean, I can, I can do more, I guess. Um, but that's, that's kind of the basic. Okay.
So like, that would happen whenever you want to, like when you're exercising, right?
Yeah. So the, the release of nitric oxide. This is one of the ways that we get local control of blood flow to go to a certain tissue. Okay. So when you start to exercise, we're gonna, as you, as you start moving and things, we're gonna increase blood velocity and stuff going towards skeletal muscle. And then that causes the release of nitric oxide, which then further vasodilates those arterioles and gets even more blood to go to skeletal muscle. So that's one of the, one of the big kind of ways that we, we locally are gonna get blood to the place that it needs to be during exercise.
Okay. Makes sense now. Thank you.
And we didn't talk about it at all, but you guys hopefully talked about it in health and fitness or maybe in testing and prescription. Um, if you've had that or haven't, but when you have atherosclerosis or arteriosclerosis and you have fatty deposits in your blood vessels, it covers up the endothelium. And so therefore you can't sense that shear stress. And so you can't vasodilate properly. And that leads to an inability to lower blood pressure properly. Um, and increases your risk of having heart attacks and blood clots and things like that. So. So nitric oxide's a big deal. Truman has left us. He's fallen asleep. I've put him to sleep. Only took me twenty-eight minutes. I don't think I put any of you guys to sleep in class. I have before. Those are the fun days when somebody falls asleep in class. What else, guys? You guys know all of it?
No, no.
Or Matty, it's just like, no, 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 I don't.
Well, I usually highlight stuff in red for like any more explanation. So I don't know if this is like a question I have. It's not phrase is a question. I just wrote role of being water soluble for CO2 and O2. I don't know.
Hmm. So CO2 is much more soluble in water than oxygen is. And so because of that, it's much easier. We don't need as large of a partial pressure gradient to be able to diffuse the CO2 from the cytoplasm into the plasma in the blood. That's the use. O2 is not very water soluble, which is why we have to have hemoglobin. If we didn't have hemoglobin, we'd be completely screwed. Um, in, in that way. So that's, that's all that that means. I don't, I do not imagine I will ask any kind of a question about something like that, Matty.
Perfect. Okay. I have another question. Um, I wrote role of surface area in diffusion.
Oh, yeah. So we need more surface area. The more surface area you have, the more, the more chance you have to get diffusion. So that's why we have alveoli. That's why we have all those capillaries in the alveoli. That's why having more capillaries in skeletal muscle in response to training or, or those things. In response to training or or those things actually gets us more diffusion. And so I mean, it's just kind of a, I don't know what the official law is. I want to call it's like the law of mass action. It's just, you know, the more of those things there are. Right? The more crowded of a place you're in. The greater chance you're gonna bump into somebody. So the more area there is for you to go through, then here we go. So that's the, that's the the big thing.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks.
Mm hmm. Surface area is a big thing in physiology for diffusion. It's a big thing, right? When we talk about the primary and secondary clefts at the neuromuscular junction and things like that, like, you know. Physiology and sort of evolutionarily having more surface area is really, is really important. Right? Because we have like half a tennis court of surface area in our lungs for diffusion, which is just crazy to me.
I have a question.
Of course, Kelly.
On the lecture eleven outline, you have anatomy and you have um. Like the anatomy of lungs and alveoli is what you just said, kind of what you want us to know for that? Or like what specifically? Did you want us to know for the anatomy?
Um, I need you to know, and I think it's probably in a different place in there too, but like the um. The conducting zone, right anatomical dead space. Um, those those things as well, just that sort of in the upper part of the airway. The 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 part closest to the nose and the mouth and those things, right? We humidify, but we don't actually do any diffusion. And then as we sort of work our way down the bronchiolar tree. Then we really are gonna start having the the more and more of those alveoli, which is gonna give us more surface area. Yeah. So. Yes, what you said, but also be able to make those kind of distinctions between the different zones and things in it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
How much do you want us to know about the oxyhemoglobin dissociation curve? Are we gonna like draw it out?
No.
I guess that won't be like that difficult, but.
So all that I really want you to know about all of that, right, is that. You know, if you have just a very general sense of what the curve kind of looks like, right? Is that because it's so steep in the middle? That's really useful to us because we don't have to change partial pressures very much to get loading and unloading on the of oxygen. And that the primary thing that happens during exercise is with an increase in temperature and a decrease in pH, so becoming slightly more acidic. We shift the curve to the right, right? And by shifting it to right, to the right, we make it easier to unload oxygen into the tissues. So the shape of the curve allows us to get this sort of high amount of diffusion that we get anyway. And then the curve shifts in response to exercise in a way that makes us even better, which is an advantageous thing for exercise.
Okay.
That's really it.
Perfect.
Yes, so I know a little bit about how body temperature is regulated, but on question eight on the little review thing, um. I guess I'm just not really super sure the difference between the control organs and affector organ.
Oh, so like the the hypothalamus and things, Brock, like that it's controlled in the. Like, I swear that's exactly how it's worded on the slides. Like, it talks about like the hypothalamus has control and then. And then, you know, the effector organs are like the sweat glands and. Blood vessels and those kinds of things, right? And then we're gonna signal to do that.
Um, yeah, okay, I guess I just thought it was more. Complex than that.
No, no, like, I mean, it's it's controlled mostly by, you know, by the hypothalamus. There's those thermoreceptors. There's central and peripheral thermoreceptors. And then once we sense changes in temperature, then the hypothalamus is gonna signal those other. Right? The sweat glands and blood flow is gonna control those kinds of things. And then if it gets really hot for a while, then it's gonna, it's gonna cause central fatigue.
Um, for that question number eight that Brock just asked about, there is two slides. There is one that explained, uh. Like the hypothalamus and like the central and the peripheral. Peripheral thermoreceptors, but then there is another slide right after that that had like four steps and it said like. Increase blood and internal temperature and then like that. Do we need to know both of those for that question?
Yes, Ava. So the the second slide is more of the kind of like, what is the response of the kind of effector organs or effector tissues, if you will? Right? So we're, we are sensing. The change in temperature. And then we're doing something right about to try to help us dissipate more heat. Um, is kind of what we're trying to get at with that second slide.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I have a question. Um, so on the exam, uh, let's say for essay question hypothetical. Um, you asked, okay, so we want someone to become better at training and. Um, higher VO two, VO two max. What would you recommend? Uh, training in hotter temperatures outside or would you recommend? Cooler temperatures outside or altogether, would you recommend indoor training? I don't know. That's very broad, but.
That's a, it's an interesting question. That is a question that I have I have asked um of the graduate students. Um, I'm in the interest of not confusing everyone since that is not something that I put on the list of questions. Um, I'm not gonna. I'm I'm not gonna really, I will not ask a question like that. Um, at all. So the the honest answer is you probably need to go outside and walk around somewhere. It's hot to get the heat acclimatization, but you probably need to do your training indoors. In a more thermo neutral environment so you don't experience cardiovascular. You get the, you get the, you get the adaptation of having a bigger blood volume. But you train in a thermo neutral environment where you can work harder, basically. That's probably what I would actually tell people to do. So. Which reminds me, do y'all like the last two questions that I told you all? Like, these are just kind of fun things to think about. You're gonna ride a bike upside down? Or you're gonna, can we train you by asking, by making you watch scary movies? The scary movie thing was a question that another faculty member asked a PhD student. In their comprehensive exams, um, when I was at Ole Miss and it's always stuck with me. Um, as a, as a really interesting kind of thing. So if I have any scary movie buffs out there. But it's kind of the same thing, right? Like, can I train you by having you get in the sauna? It's kind of the same, sort of the same idea. Probably doesn't work, but it's interesting. Anything else? Going once, going twice? Okay. All right, guys. Well, uh, I will be, I'll try to get this posted soon and I will be around in the morning. For class. So if you have additional questions, you can come by and see me or you can give me a call or shoot me an email or something. Or text and with that, try to get some sleep tonight. Um. No matter what, it's all over tomorrow. So then you guys are, many of you guys are done. So we're gonna, we're gonna do good. I got a good feeling about this. We will, uh, we'll see you guys tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course.